Mayor.
Civil.
Yeah, civil. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmembers Daigle and Celish are currently absent, and Councilmember Daigle has an excused absence.
We all wish Councilmember Daigle well on her recovery. Okay. You'll be here shortly. Any councilmembers have items on the consent calendar for clarification? Mr. Hen.
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
Mr. Petros?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I have one on item six, the street sweeping contract. I just wanted to comment and gain some clarification. I was quite impressed with the contract and the terms that are included in that contract, where level of maintenance is called out at the highest industry standard, and that is italicized and capitalized. The performance judgment is left to the judgment of the city. It goes on to state items that the personnel are to be neat in appearance, and in uniforms at all times, they're to be competent and experienced. As it relates to the level of effort and the maintenance, the contract goes on to cite that speeds of the vehicles are to travel no faster than five miles an hour, meaning that they are slowly proceeding through the alleys. They're to go through multiple times. The call-out on the level of effort is very, very high, and I applaud you, staff, for putting those terms together or working with the bidders, all that for extremely competitive rates. And, one, congratulations for that. Two, we have had some comments that the current roadway street sweeping might not be up to the level that some folks believe that it ought to be. I'm wondering, are these same terms applicable to some of our roadway street sweeping as well?
Yes, Councilmember Petros. The five mile an hour sweeping is fairly standard, and it's actually in the street sweeping contract also.
Have you ever had to call upon the terms of those contracts to get the street sweeper to come back? Or is that, I shouldn't say have you ever, is that something that is a problem for you and have to call on them frequently to abide by that?
It's not an ongoing problem. Occasionally, we notice, or we will get a complaint. The sweeping companies all have GPS tracking systems in their sweepers, and we can pull up on a computer, and if it says it's going seven miles an hour, or if they miss a street, we can, you know, tell the resident if they in fact got it, that they were there between, you know, 10:06 and 10:08.
So we have real-time availability on the speeds to make sure that the level of maintenance is what the City of Newport Beach would like?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Well, I just wanted to clarify that, applaud you for that. I'm glad to hear that that is what happens on our streets, and I am hopeful that as we go into negotiations on our trash outsourcing, this same type of attention is paid, and we get that level of service as well. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Hill?
I have nothing.
Mr. Celish, any items for clarification on the consent calendar?
I have none.
And I have none. Next item on the agenda is the OCTA presentation on Measure Two, Measure M2.
Right, right on cue. Thank you. Good evening, and on behalf of OCTA, appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Just, Daryl Johnson really wanted to be here, but he's got a little conflicting stuff kind of going on with a few of our major projects. But wanted to kind of take a little bit of time to talk to you about what OCTA does in terms of services, as well as some of the near-term projects that we're doing in your area. And so, just kind of, we have better awareness, and to the extent that you have some questions, be happy to kind of provide some answers. So with that, one of the things is that OCTA is a multidisciplinary kind of agency. We do a number of things. In addition to being the bus company for the county, we're also the transportation planning agency for the county. And we also have responsibility for the collection of sales tax, the half-cent transportation sales tax. We call it Measure M. Because it's a renewal of the past measure that expired in 2011, we refer to it kind of in-house as M2. So you may hear me say that once in a while. So, and then, the other things that we do, we provide the 91 Express lanes. That's the facility that connects Orange County to Riverside. We manage and operate that one. So, a bunch of things, other things on the side, freeway service patrol, et cetera. So, in our planning function, one of the things that I wanted to kind of touch base with you a little bit tonight is that we're updating our 30-year long-range plan. And we do this roughly about every four years. We did it in 2010 last time, and now we're basically on track for the 2014 update. We look usually about 25 to 30 years ahead, and one of the things that this time we're trying to deal with is that we expect to be a greater expectation with respect to dealing with greenhouse gas reductions as part of our long-range plan. In addition, we expect that it's going to be, you know, we have tighter constraint in your communities. You kind of see that we really are running out of room to build out, and we really have to see what we can do better with our existing facilities and be creative with that. And the ever-usual dealing with rules and regulations, that just doesn't become easier every year. So, that's one of the things that we're doing. Tomorrow, we're having an elected workshop in Tustin. I believe, hopefully, somebody from your city will be there. So we're trying to reach out to a number of groups, including at the elected level, but at the business level, other stakeholders such as schools, and even, this time, we're trying to reach to high schools, because that's the generation of tomorrow, and we're trying to see what kind of things that they would like to see out there in terms of transportation solutions. So we have that in mind. So that's kind of a little bit of our, on our planning. Let me switch quickly to Measure M2, as I refer to it. We did get it renewed in 2006, but we, while it was, it's good news that we got it renewed, all our financial projections and the projects that we assume that we can deliver was based on 2005 revenue forecasts, and we probably couldn't have picked a worse time to kind of do your revenue forecasts. That was the height of, so to speak, the economy was going like gangbusters, and according to our projections at that time, the program was going to generate $24 billion over the life of the measure. We had the basically economic slowdown, and that resulted in our projections being downgraded. But right now, it's coming back, but we're expecting about $15.5 billion. So that gets us to roughly about 36% below. But the good news is, by bringing in outside funding, other sources, we can deliver the entire program. So freeways are going, some of the bigger freeway projects in your area. Of course, you don't have a freeway in your city, but you do have the 405 that takes a lot of the pressure off of the PCH, and we're in the final stages of the environmental document on that one. We hope to have a decision. Our plan is to implement it using design-build and get into construction by 2015 and have it completed and open to traffic in 2019. Other projects related to Measure M is basically distribution of monies for streets and roads. Your city gets revenues through a formula program. I believe it's around $1.6 million a year. In addition to that, you have been very successful in terms of grants, roughly in the neighborhood of $5 million, just under Measure M2 in the past three years. And just this past Monday, the board approved some water quality projects for some water quality cleanup in your city as well. That was about $100,000 that happened just this past Monday. So, you know, and I will say that we're also trying to improve our bus services, and one of the things that we did this summer, we did try, we started a new summer program that has been available rest of the county, but this year, we started the OC Fair Express, starting at the Newport Transit Center right out here. First year, usually the ridership is not very high, because people are trying to just hear about it, but it's a great deal, and hopefully, we can get the grants to keep that program going and have it offered to your community next year as well. It's about, you know, it's $2 to ride the bus and $5 to get into the fair, and it's a, it's a great deal. So, trying to provide the transit services. I'll close with what we're doing on the bikes. We are, we're also trying to do some regional bikeway planning, and some of the corridors that have, has emerged in terms of priority is, would be some sort of a bike corridor along the PCH corridor. So that's one of the ones that we're, it's been prioritized for the next level of detailed analysis, and we hope that that would be, that would, you know, that we will have more definitive projects coming out of that. Just kind of related to that, OCTA does have a call for projects, for bike projects currently on the street. Applications are due this Monday, this coming Monday. So, we're doing a lot of things, on the transportation side, on the transit side, on the planning side. So, I'll close with that, and Mayor, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Mortasvi, for coming down and visiting with us. I think Mayor Hill has a, Mayor Protim Hill has a question?
I would just like to say thanks on behalf of the city and on behalf of the TCA for bringing the TCA to the table with Caltrans and OCTA and dealing with the 405, and most importantly, the interconnect to the 73. I think that however that comes out with all the parties involved, I think we'll have the best solution, and it is important for access to Newport Beach. So, do appreciate that decision that was made just last week.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mortasvi, too, I would also like to thank OCTA for a couple of items. I chair the city's Bicycle Master Plan Oversight Committee, and we're in the process of putting together a comprehensive bicycle master plan for the City of Newport Beach. Our committee has participated in the Supervisory Districts 1 and 2 Bicycle Collaborative, and one, the level of outreach that has been put out county, or at least within the district, the Supervisory Districts, is notable, and so I'm grateful for that. I am also encouraged that the PCH corridor has risen in its preference, its priority, from four to, I believe, two. With that in mind, I'm also grateful that in response to requests made by our Public Works Director and the Public Works Directors in the coastal cities, that OCTA has been willing to embark on a PCH corridor-wide study. That is something that is very important to us, that we collaborate with OCTA to gain an understanding of how it functions throughout Newport Beach, and to see if there aren't ways that we can work together to enhance mobility along the corridor. So, all good things, and thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just add something real quick, for the public's sake, OCTA, Mr. Mortasvi brought a flyer for you, and you have a copy of it, and it lists the projects that are currently in there, and the funding to the city, and also on the back, you'll notice the freeway projects. We have copies out in front for the various folks if they'd like to see that.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you again for the great job OCTA does in partnership with the city. We appreciate all the good work and keep it up.
Thank you.
And Keith, if I could ask you to just hang around a little bit, we're going to talk next about Coast Highway, and there may be some questions related to OCTA and that.
Thank you. Are there any public comments related to the OCTA presentation? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which is the Mariners Mile PCH Capacity Discussion.
Mayor, I must recuse myself from this item, as I live within 500 feet of PCH.
Okay. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This item we're bringing back tonight was something that was brought forward to council on July 9th of this year, and we were asked to explore this a little further and bring some information back to you. So the questions that we were asked are involved in here, and also some more information, and this is about Mariners Mile on West Coast Highway. Some background before we get started on West Coast Highway. Currently, the facility is owned and operated by the State of California. The highway was dedicated back in 1923. It's been around a long time. It serves in this area as a, you think of PCH as a north-south corridor, but as you go through Orange County, it's more of an east-west route. It serves interstate traffic, regional traffic, and local traffic. The other thing about Mariners Mile, it has a major utility corridor going through it. There are a lot of utilities in that. We have two major sewer lines, a 36-inch, 24-inch. We have major water lines, 24, 8, various sizes. There's a major natural gas distribution line in there, electrical lines, and telecommunications lines. And it has to do with the geographical nature. As you look at that point, it kind of squeezes around the mesa there. So, when the highway was built, all the utilities tend to follow that highway through there. We also have a lot of bikes on this, as mentioned earlier. This particular facility, Coast Highway, has a lot of bike traffic. Both recreational commuter bikes use this. And then again, maintenance and signal operation is by the state. Background specifically to Mariners Mile, this segment is basically 1.35 miles, and it goes from Dover Drive on the east over to Newport Boulevard on the west. Currently, the right-of-way is about, it's 100 feet wide, and it's been that way since 1932. There are segments in there that are a little wider because of dedications over the years, but generally, it's 100 feet. Currently, it's a two-southbound lane and two or three-northbound. The third lane, as you know, picks up right about, around the point by the pump station across from the scout base, and continues on west all the way to Newport Boulevard. And then your eastbound leg is going two lanes the other direction. The facility has scattered parking on it. There's metered and non-metered parking on it. And the current designation of it by the State of California is a six-lane major arterial. It's also designated that way on the Orange County Arterial Highway of Master Plan of Arterial Highways, and also in the city's general plan. I want to put this slide in there, so you can just kind of representation of how Coast Highway flows through the county, and you'll notice the 405 and the 73 parallel to the north. It is a regional connection down in San Clemente. It takes traffic off and it runs it up through LA, and of course, it continues, as you know, going past the Orange County line through Seal Beach into LA there. So one of the questions asked of us is, what is the city's role in planning and maintaining West Coast Highway through Mariners Mile? Well, again, it's a state facility, but we have several things we do in there. We maintain conformance with the county's arterial highway master plan and our circulation element in this area when zoning and developments come through. We also ensure that the city's transportation circulation needs are met in accordance with our general plan and our vision, and even though it's a state facility, we look at vehicles and bicycles, pedestrians, and the aesthetic appearance. And as Councilmember Petros mentioned, we are doing a Coast Highway study, and we want to make sure that our vision of this area is also incorporated into that study. We also work on the development of implementation of zoning and land use on the highway, and we coordinate with the state and utilities on capital improvement projects. Again, there's a lot of utilities in there. You've had some of the benefits of those. You've seen some of the projects currently. There's one right now at Dover and PCH on a major sewer repair and replace some of that line. And then we have some limited landscaping in this stretch, and we maintain that landscaping. So as we go forward to, I want to have a little master plan 101 here. I've mentioned the Orange County Transportation Authority, and they've been with us tonight. The Orange County Transportation Authority is currently the administrator of the Master Plan of Arterial Highways, and you'll see that MPH. We use that a lot, that's part of our circulation element. This document's been around since 1956. It started with the county of Orange and resided with them for quite a long time, and then eventually, the duties were transferred over to OCTA. It basically designates a regional network of highways for planned use, development, and what we need to preserve out there in the way of highways. It's really a critical element to our system, and it kind of gets an overall picture of the transportation planning and operations throughout the county, which supports the existing land uses, basically the development of Orange County. In order to receive Measure M2 money, as we just heard, we have to be in compliance with the Master Plan of Arterial Highways, and our circulation element is checked against that periodically to make sure we are in compliance. There are ways to amend it. We just recently went through a process. If you remember, the 19th Street Bridge, that was a longstanding amendment that was done. I gave the process here real quick. If we chose to do amendments to it, and it's not a common thing, but there are amendments once in a while, you need to come up with mutual agreement between the agencies that are affected. The people that want to do the amendment, the lead agency is tasked with paying for the cooperative study that talks about what needs to be done, what mitigation measures would have to do if you want to make that amendment. The lead agency also needs to pay for and process the necessary environmental document that goes with that. And then the lead agency will work with OCTA staff, if you get that far along, to process that through the various organizations in OCTA and all the way up through the OCTA So, a little bit more about master plans, and in this case, the master plan depicts a network of major thoroughfares throughout Orange County. We have freeways in there, transportation quarters, and our arterial highway system in there. And I listed here for your view the various arterials that we have. We have principles, and they're typically eight lanes divided. Next to it, you'll see numbers. Those are the average daily traffic, which is a two-way traffic, and those numbers represent basically A through C level of service, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Each one of those, a major six-lane highway, primary four-lane highway, each has a relative ADT that it can handle, the capacity it can move without coming into congestion or serious breakdown. And again, that's A through C. And as a practice, we usually design for about a level of service C on capacities when we look at lengths, but there are cases where we go down to level of service D or E or F. Little history, too. This is basically the master plan from 1958, when it was established. You look at the Newport Beach version there. Interesting to note, right, going through the center of the city is a proposed freeway, and it crosses right around where the current bridge is now, and goes up through Newport and Santa Ana Heights, and comes out and cuts across into Huntington Beach. This was never developed, as you know. We've changed over the years, but it did show there was a considerable consideration. We'd have a lot of flow going through this area back in 1958. You also see they have a large donate for the current West Coast Highway there, which is also shown as a principle going through there, a major street. Little later on, in 1963, it's changed again, and this again, this changes over time as we look at it periodically and how developed the development is going to proceed in Orange County. In this case, now the freeway has been realigned, and it actually follows West Coast Highway on this version. Again, really denoting that we have a lot of volume projected to go through there. You can see the layout of the Newport Coast area, what might happen in the future. You also note things like the University Avenue Bridge that's supposed to cross over the bay. That never got built, as you know, and some of the other links that it may or may not be there today. And this is the current plan, as you see it today. This is the adopted plan, and this is also the one that's in our circulation element. And it notes all the various primaries, majors, and principal highways there. The red denotes most of the six-lane facilities out there. And again, this is a plan. Not all those are built, just like if you look down at Mariners Mile, that's a two- and three-lane facility each direction. The principles are the green, and there's capacity and things that go with this, so I wanted to kind of show you how it looks as of today. We've mentioned a little bit about level of service, so when we get into master plans, we use this term "level of service" for capacity. And here are the various levels of services that are in our arterial highway master plan. A, obviously, very free-flowing. B gets a little more restricted. C is what we call stable flow. We can move traffic relatively smoothly through there. D, we get a little more, less stable. We start having small increases in flow, cause major problems. It causes backup and delays. E is unstable flow, where we have significant delay, and F is just very extremely slow. And you've probably experienced one of all these when you drive through the county, because they do exist in various places throughout the county.
So Dave, those aren't exactly objective, measurable standards, right? So, I think, for me, I figure it's not so good when it takes me two cycles to get through a stoplight. Which of those would be, it takes me two cycles to get through a stoplight?
I'm going to ask Tony. I think, I think it's an F if you have two cycles, but...
Well, actually, having to go through two cycles or more is not tied to a level of service.
I know, but, you know...
There's intersection levels of service as well, but what'll take into account and what we look at as far as the, you know, going through the cycles at the intersections would be the timing, which is not related to the level of service capacity calcs.
But when you get in a large intersection with a cycle length of 120 seconds, two of those seems like an infinite amount of time, as you know, so... So what is Coast Highway right now through Mariners Mile? And what we wanted to show you here is the ADTs, the current, which is if you look from Newport to Tustin, we have two links in here, and they're a little different, mainly because River and Tustin take a lot of traffic to the north. The state does the counts on this, and these are 2013 counts. We're running basically 84,000 ADT going through the Newport to Tustin segment, and below that, you'll see Tustin to Dover, and it's about 43,000. On the future, we're projecting is 55,000 for the first link, and the second link would be about 53,000. The other thing to note on there is they count 9% trucks. That's basically the percentage of traffic that is trucks. That's a really high number when you get to trucks. 6% is a pretty high number. That shows the regional and industrial nature of the corridor. We do have a lot of trucks that move goods through there. At the bottom, I made a couple notes, just so you can compare, because you've watched this highway for a long time. You felt that, back in 1991 and 2003, our count showed about 50,000 ADT. And then you'll know in 19, 2009 and 2011, our count kind of went down to 44,000, and it kind of correlates with a recession in there. So, and we've talked about that, we saw the countywide counts go down a little bit throughout in the recession. In 2013, you saw them roughly about the same as 2011 in that portion, but it could show that we have a history of higher counts in the past. This is a map that... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I, can I re, for a minute? To go back to the level of service, we have a general plan that has a goal for maintaining level of service, and that, that general goal is level of service...
D.
And so, can you, or would somebody be able to speak to the notion, there's a general plan concept called correlation? And it says that you must correlate your circulation element, that level of service D performance, with the land use element, right? Can anybody... My point is that in order for our general plan to be deemed acceptable, to pass muster legally, we have to show correlation, that in fact, the land uses that are proposed must support or be able to be supported by a circulation system that operates at level of service D.
Yes.
We can't add more land use and let things go to E or F and just kind of shrug our shoulders.
And that's the science you recommend. You'll probably hear a little bit more about that in this presentation and the following one, because we're looking at land use right now. And anytime we look at land use, the correlation is we have to look at the traffic circulation, as you know, on the side. There's usually a traffic study or a model run or something to say, if I add a lot of density here, what kind of traffic impacts, and where are they going to show up? And that is an important fact, and we will talk a little bit more about that. So I wanted to point this out, so you get kind of a representation. This is a scaled graph of basically the average daily traffic throughout the system in Newport Beach, and you can see kind of above us, Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, and you start to get in the feel for how the traffic flows. If you look at Mariners Mile, and find my pointer, it's right in here. There's the 43 and the 48 we talked about. Newport Boulevard here, Harbor Boulevard, you start seeing a three-lane facility, start going 40, 46, 50. Fairview gets in the 46s, 47s. Here's Jamboree over here, a six-lane facility, you have 40s, 38 there. And then, of course, MacArthur has a large flow, and your 73 freeway in here. This is obviously, you can see where the free portion goes, and then the toll lane starts here, and the traffic drops off substantially and goes through the pass here, Newport Coast out here. Corona del Mar, we have high volumes in there. We've got 47,000, 52,000 right by MacArthur. Those are some of the, just to compare, because it is important to say, well, gosh, how does this compare to others? Also, take a note at Brookers. You're probably familiar with Brookers going into Fountain Valley here. You're about 41,000 cars. It gets a little higher right around the freeway here. So comparing the level of service and the ADT is what we talked about earlier, and this is Newport Boulevard to Tustin, the first table up above. And for a five-lane facility, and again, we have three lanes going westbound, we're running about 48,000 ADT. That shows us we're at a level of service E. And in the future, if we get to the 55,000, we'll be at level of service F. If you made that a six-lane facility, and that is the master plan build-out lane number, we will still be at a level of service D today with 48,000, and at build-out, we'd be in the E range. The link down at Tustin to Dover, you can see it's a little different. Currently, it's four lanes, and we run about 43,000 cars through there. It's currently in a level of service F. Again, remember, it's four lanes there. So the future at 53 would be an F situation. If we were able to move that to a six-lane facility, today, it would go to a level of service C, and in the future, it would be a level of service E. There's a lot of things that play into that, and those are just rough table numbers, but it has to do with the number of driveways, if they have raised medians or not, the side friction involved. These are generally for divided highways with raised medians. When you have left-turn movements and other things that are allowed, it creates more friction, and obviously, your level of service drops a little bit. The other thing we look at is intersection level of service, and we have three key intersections in this link, so we wanted to point those out. And you'll notice the existing level of service again, and the build-out level of service. The existing is with the current number of lanes, and when we look at build-out, we look at the ultimate with the six lanes going through. And then you have both, you'll see, for instance, Riverside and West Coast Highway on your existing says BC. You've got a morning level of service B and an evening level of service of C. And the intersections are running relatively good. You can see we have some problems in the future at Dover and West Coast You can see we have some problems in the future at Dover and West Coast Highway, we go D/E in that. And again, we'll talk a little bit later, there's a general plan allowance to go to a level service E or at least allow a level of service E on that particular intersection, but typically, we don't like our level service to drop below level service D. So I also want to kind of put in a couple ideas, because we just did a general plan update in 2006 and we had a lot of discussion about this. And I would mention that going through the files, I've been here several years now, but this is not a new subject for this quarter. Going back all the way to the early 90s, I saw emails and discussions with the community on capacity and what we should be doing here. When we went through the update of the general plan in 2006, we developed this vision statement under the circulation element. Where traffic is to flow smoothly throughout the community, the transportation and circulation system is safe and convenient for automobiles and public transportation and friendly to pedestrians and bicycles. Public parking facilities are well-planned for residents and visitors. And that kind of gave the flavor of what we wanted to do in our circulation system. We had some key elements in the policies and goals for the circulation system and I listed most of those on here. The first one is provide an integrated transportation system that supports the land use set forth in land use element. And that's what Mr. Petros just alluded to, they go together, they connect. If you change one, you definitely change the other. Another policy was to plan the arterial roadway system to accommodate projected traffic at the following levels of service. And we have these specific items in our general plan. The first one was, we want to maintain at least a level of service D throughout the city unless otherwise noted. I don't have item B there, but item C is basically, we will allow a level of service E at the following intersections. And you'll note here Riverside Avenue, Coast Highway and Dover, Coast Highway are allowed to go to a level service E. I'm assuming when we looked at the model, to get those from an E to a D to a C would be very problematic, there must have been constraints, probably right-of-way and other things that caused us to allow that deviation there.
Dave, can I drop back to those traffic numbers? How do those numbers through Mariners' Mile compare to the numbers, say, through Corona Del Mar?
If I could go back to this slide, and if you'll note here, currently, this is the 84 and the, I'm sorry, the 48 and the 43,000 you saw. And if you run over here towards, this would be MacArthur right here, and there's 52,000 in this link to Marguerite. And from Marguerite out to, they don't show the street, but I'm guessing it's Cameo Highlands or so, we get about 47,000. And it picks up going between Newport Coast and it probably has to do with part of the towns leaving this way and taking Newport Coast.
So significantly higher in Corona Del Mar than these numbers?
It is higher in Corona Del Mar. And again, the LOS, level service is very restricted there. We have right-of-way constraints, it's a little different right-of-way. But you're aware of how slow and how that area operates and you'd probably see similar over here. Again, a little different, we don't have the same storefronts, we have different turning movements, a lot more probably driveways versus streets. Do you want to see the slide again? So as we go forward and go through the transportation element, again, a couple other items here, here's one of the statements we have. And this was something we've talked about back in February of last year. Pursue ownership of Coast Highway throughout Newport Beach as opportunities arise. The key is so the Coast Highway can be improved to its ultimate width in Mariners' Mile, consistent with the city's vision and to provide the city with more options and opportunities for the efficiency increase in there. We've talked about the pursuit of Coast Highway and we are continuing to look at that. Last time we looked at this in February, we found it not feasible because the state didn't have any money to pay for anything. Again, we've also talked about, we're pursuing widening and addressing Mariners' Mile and also other parts of Coast Highway regardless of the state, because we have other ways to do it, work with the state, bring money to the table, things like that. Wanted to show you some typical cross-sections of what we see on an arterial, you're familiar with these, and on the left-hand side at the top, you have a major and it's typically about 120 feet wide. You have a divided highway in the middle landscaping typically. The one below just shows a transit model and these are the OCTA guidelines. So you typically on an arterials, you're going to see buses and transit and things like that. On the other side, you'll see what a primary looks like and they're typically 100 feet wide, four lanes. And at the bottom is more probably particular, we use a lot of our primaries have bike lanes on them, so you have two lanes of traffic, a raised median and bike lanes. So looking at Mariners' Mile specifically, these are some of the cross-sections that exist today. We currently have some cross-sections, if you note at the top, there's 112 feet, because we have, since about 1993, been requiring dedications and setbacks and in some places, we have actual right-of-way. This is around the Holiday Inn and that would be how the current lanes configure. You'll note there's three westbound and two eastbound. And then below that, we have a 100-foot section, this is right around the Pelican Wall. And again, we've got a three westbound situation, two eastbound lanes. There's no parking on the south side, so you have a very wide lane there. Again, there's no stripe bike lanes right now on the highway, that's something we would like to achieve. Further down, we take a snapshot where McDonald's is and you'll see it's a 100-foot right-of-way. In that case, we have two lanes in each direction. And then here is a place by Hit Marine, we have a 100-foot section there and that's how the lanes are passing through there and you can see there's parking on both sides, that kind of takes eight foot and 11 foot in that case. And at the bottom is the typical section of the proposed 112-foot, if we were to have the extra 12 feet or eventually widen it all the way through. This was developed many years ago and this shows a six-lane configuration with bike lanes on either side and sidewalks and a 14-foot, I'm going to say stripe median, because I don't know, there's places that you might be able to raise landscape median, but we have a lot of left turn movements that go on that portion of the highway, so it may be a stripe median. The key, you'll notice, there's no parking on the street, that's really how it gets So we do have parking on the street. It is not typical on an arterial, we have it on the older arterials, you'll find parking. And again, I've mentioned it's scattered throughout, it's both metered and non-metered here. Removal of the parking is preferred, generally, a couple reasons, it has some safety concerns and it causes congestion. If you can imagine, you hear about dooring once in a while and other things, if you're trying to parallel park on an arterial, you're basically stopping in the number two or three lane, taking the lane out while you back in, causes congestion. The other thing different about this highway than most arterials is that we, this is within the coastal zone, so removal of parking will probably be required by the Coast Commission to be replaced. And that's a concern we have to address. So one of the keys is obviously, how is this funded? How would we pay for this? Well, typically, the state would be responsible, it's their facility, but we're aware of their long-term budget shortfalls, they have higher priorities, they're working on the freeway system and other congested spots, so Coast Highway would probably take more of a lower priority in that. The good news is, and then OCTA is here with us today and that's part of the whole program, OCTA has a combined transportation funding program where the city can apply for grants and in particular widening intersections or lengths, pieces of it. They have a funding source and we have the match down below, I mentioned, we have measure M money and gas tax. We get about $1.6 million a year now in fair share measure M money, that's turned back to us and that comes from a formula based on, your population goes into 50% of it, 25% is based on sales tax generated in the city and the other 25% is based on how many miles of built arterials you have. The other one, we get gas tax and we get about $2 million a year in that. And those monies can be used to match the OCTA grant monies to do the widening and the improvements that we'd like to do on the highway. So with that, that's kind of the general background and facts. It'd be our recommendation, obviously, to keep the current designation of West Coast Highway at Mariners' Mile as a six-lane major and basically abide by the general plan goal of widening the highway to its ultimate and within the city's vision if you so choose. With that, open up to questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Councilman Gardner?
How wide is PCH at MacArthur?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head, it's probably wider than 100 feet, it's got, gosh, you shouldn't know that we just looked at that, but it's probably about 120, there's a lot more, there's been widening in the past in that area.
I mean, I understand that our general plan talks about moving people through there, but it seems to me that there's a delicate balance there, because there's an effort to sort of reimagine that area and to invigorate it. And I don't know, that six lanes of traffic is the way to do it. In Corona Del Mar, a number of years ago, they had a visioning process for the community, we said, we're going to be a pedestrian-oriented community and we're going to put up with the traffic. We're going to be four lanes, because we want that median down the center, we want all those looks. And so, I don't know, have we gone through that process with Mariners' Mile? And I mean, we had a lot of residents, because Corona Del Mar residents are right there with only a block between them. But it just seems like there may be some conflict for building in to say, we're not going to be able to accomplish what we want to do in Mariners' Mile because of the road being so wide and nothing else there.
You comment on that? Well, the only comment I have, there's a process if you wanted to go through it, I don't know if we've done it lately, there's been talk about it. You can change designations of arterials. The key on that is we found out is you have to do a traffic study and there's usually mitigation involved. We already probably have problems with cut-through traffic going up through Cliff and 16th and 17th. And if you tried to narrow that highway or downgrade it basically, you're going to have to probably have offsetting mitigation to get the traffic around, which may, we wouldn't know what that is, but I'm guessing there'd be widening of Cliff or 16th or something to get the traffic around.
You weren't here then, but did we have to do that with, through Corona Del Mar? Did we change the designation there or... Ed, you remember, you were there at the beginning?
It's always...
I believe it's always been four lanes, Steve was just telling me, it was never a six-lane arterial designation.
On the, on the plan, the master plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Webb, on the proposed typical section for West Coast Highway at the 112-foot right-of-way, you've got 12-foot lanes and 14-foot median. Those are standards, yet the current width of lanes is 11 feet with a 12-foot median area. Are you suggesting those standards because it's Caltrans control today? And could we consider changes to those standards if we took control of the highway?
Yes, typically, the 12-foot is a state standard and it's also our standard where applicable. You could change that. Again, we have restrictions as we get down, I wouldn't go any closer than 10 feet, 11 feet's kind of tight, but you could save a little room if you wanted to change the lane widths. If you, if the state owned the street, you'd have to go through their design exception process. If we owned it, we would be doing it ourselves.
The, by virtue of presenting a typical section, there is nothing in here that speaks to access control or access management. There's nothing that we are suggesting if we do put in the sixth lane, that we would change any type of access or affect people's access to their adjoining properties.
You would probably have the same driveway locations, again, it depends how the properties are developed and some have already and the driveway would move back, it could be the same location. The other thing we like to do in the arterials is like to combine driveways where possible. Every time you have a driveway, you kind of create side friction and possible issues there. So I don't see them changing access unless we have the opportunities.
Thank you.
I have another question if I may.
Councilman Gardner?
You have a page, I don't know if you showed it, because I've been looking at my paper, but examples of similar six-lane arterials?
I do, actually, and I can show that, I just had a slide behind here, I thought you might want to see.
And I'm, I'm not absolutely familiar with every single spot on these, but I've driven them before and in my mind, I'm associating those with very wide streets and strip malls and pretty impersonal stuff. And there must be better examples that would show us something that we feel is more in our community, because this really does not suggest what we would want for that area of Newport Beach. So can you think of other ones that might be more similar to what we have?
Well, ours is very unique, actually. These are just examples I looked off the plan and said, well, who's got about the same traffic ADT and they're going through commercial districts. You may be familiar with some of these, that area of Mariners' Mile has a mix of uses, it has small shops, it also has very big lots. Corona Del Mar is very unique, it has a lot of small shops. This would be some strip malls, some of it, when you get up into Imperial Highway, I know I see some clusters of small shops. There are, for instance, Fairview, I think going through Costa Mesa, I looked at, it's six lanes, but it has residential and commercial. I was just on Main Street yesterday going through San Ana, Lower San Ana, and it's all small shop clusters and it's a six-lane facility until you get up to about 4th Street, then it goes down to two lanes.
What about Huntington Beach and Main Street, does that go down to four lanes through that, that portion there? Yeah?
Yeah, Main Street's six from about Ellis over to City Hall and then it goes forward down by the highway. But you've got several, Warner's a good example, when you go through between Golden West and Gothroid area over to Warner, it's six lanes going through there. Trying to give you a feel of what the traffic's like when you get on a six-lane facility with raised medians and things. You could probably look at, if I could flip back, the overall master plan. And if you look at it, you'll probably notice there is that one right there, within the county that, excuse me, the red lines are the six-lane facilities basically, and if you look at those, you'll kind of lay, oh, I've probably been in Garden Grove or Anaheim, way up in Brea, I know I was mentioning Imperial Lambert, I've seen, been on those and they can have some familiar feels.
Mr. Selich?
This has been going on ever since I've been on the council is what to do with Mariners' Mile. And I suspect if we move ahead with the recommendation, we're just basically kicking the can down the road and, because the property owners and businessmen down there aren't going to be happy with the, with the solution. I understand the need to move, to move traffic through there and I was just wondering, have you ever looked at maybe some innovative measures to manage the traffic through there as opposed to widening the road? Like it seems to me that the real problem irrespective of the numbers you show is the peak hour traffic coming in in the morning from the east and going to the west in the afternoon. So doing something like some kind of counter-flow lane, like maybe taking the center lane and turning it into a lane in the, in the peak hour direction and restricting left turns during that period of time and adding capacity to the highway during the period of time that it really needs it, because I'm down there all the time and outside of peak hours, you don't have the need for six lanes down there, it doesn't seem. But you do have the problem when you have the peak hour traffic coming in from the Huntington Beach area or going towards Huntington Beach in the afternoon.
I haven't looked at it yet in depth, I probably have. Tony, do you have any comments on how we've looked at that in the past?
I think one of the things we've discussed previously has been combining the traffic signals or the operation of the signals at Riverside and Tustin, so that they're basically functioning as one traffic signal. And that's, that's one thing we've talked about before with Caltrans and that might be an improvement to at least get the traffic flow through that segment to improve.
I know we could do some isolate improvements, you make a good point, Councilmember Selich. And we can work with OCTA, sometimes there could be a hybrid, I believe we have that in our ability at places. Usually you have some spot intersection widenings, you look for those choke points. Reversible lane, I think we'd really have to look at how that would work. That left turn lane in the middle is, use both directions and I'm not sure how that would actually work, but we could look at things like that. We're doing some spot widening now, we're trying to do some improvements down by Newport Boulevard, run the third lane through. The key would be, and we mentioned maybe bike lanes, I think that's, there's a high need for bike lanes through this quarter. And we'd have to probably address the parking somewhere and I'm not sure how we'd do that, whether we, we put it, take it off the highway and put it in isolated locations and use it, or how would we address that?
Eric Curry? These are all, I think that we need to be creative as we look at Mariners' Mile, but the elephant in the room is the line on the map. The folks that own property along Mariners' Mile need or are asking for some certainty about where the ultimate right-of-way is. And so while we may address the flow of traffic along the highway, until there is a disposition about where the ultimate right-of-way is, whether it's at six lanes or at something other than that, the folks that live, that own property along Mariners' Mile are left without an answer. And I wanted to see if, Mr. Mortaza, if I could just ask you a question or two on the cooperative study process and NPAH, and I'm going to ask you to be the sporting man here with me now. If the city of Newport Beach were able to demonstrate that through some type of either managed flow, signal synchronization, maybe augmented capacity at intersections, if we were able to demonstrate that we could achieve the levels of service D or better, would we be, still be forced into a cooperative study process and have to engage our regional partners in that to get the downgraded segment to four lanes?
Councilmember Petros, I think in this case, you have Caltrans, which it would have to be involved. So normally, if the facility is wholly within the city and doesn't really affect adjoining cities, you can basically, we could do an informal, so to speak, cooperative process with, with the city directly. In this case, you have, to some extent, you have Caltrans involved and you, there has to be a mechanism to have them in the room.
So there is, if the city were to take this through a relinquishment with Caltrans, there may be a ministerial solution here, an administrative solution?
Are you talking about really taking ownership of the highway?
If, if the city were at some point to ever do that... If, if the city were at some point to ever do that.
Yeah, I would just defer to the city on that one, yeah.
Well, we did make, have to make sure our other agencies like Costa Mesa and others that, who would claim being affected because the traffic would go around, would have to support that. I know that I found files, letters in the file from past discussions that Costa Mesa has opposed us going down to four lanes. I'm just, there's a record back there that the other, the other folks are concerned that traffic would shift into their city. I don't know if Irvine would be close enough, but we need to get agency concurrence, kinda like we did on the 19th Street Bridge for all these years. We didn't have concurrence and you'd need to get concurrence and then you could go through the OCT process and board to have the facilities downgraded. We'd surely work with OCTA closely to get council's desire. If we could do a hybrid where it's four lanes or something like that, it's really gonna show what the traffic study shows is what's the impacts. You know, where's the traffic gonna move to? Is it gonna go into the neighborhoods? Is it gonna go into Cliff up to Sixteenth?
Any other questions? All right, let me open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I found very interesting the slide showing the current volumes of traffic we have. It says it's 2012 counts of the average daily traffic. And in a few minutes, we're gonna be hearing about Newport Beach being promoted as a visitor designation. It wasn't exactly explained or maybe I didn't hear it. I assume these accounts are averaged over an entire year. But if we are a visitor designation, obviously, our traffic must go up and down considerably during the year. And I would just be curious to know how much the average daily traffic fluctuates around these numbers we see in the following chart and how much the level of service currently along there fluctuates depending on what time of year it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Please come forward.
My name is Ned McKeon. I'm the chairman of the Mariners' Mile Business Owners Association. And I only want to question what are called the level of service, A through F. I'm on the highway every day, several times a day. I ride a bicycle on the highway, that, that stretch from Dover to Newport Boulevard. And it has been my experience that the highway rarely has congestion. You might have to sit through one signal phase at Riverside Avenue during the morning rush hour, but otherwise, the traffic flows well. And this includes a peak summertime when we have many visitors going through the area. And I just think it would be a shame to sacrifice the character, the local serving character of the highways it is now to some kind of theoretical ideal six-lane arterial. I recognize the difficulties you and the council have of changing its designation, but I just want to say that about how the highway functions now.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry, council member is Todd Ridgeway. I wanna support the entire hearing, the whole process. Nancy Gardner's comments about creating balance, I think that's important. They did it in Corona Del Mar. I think the reason that never got to a, there was nowhere to go if you tried to put that on the master arterial highway plan in Corona Del Mar. Just the land was built out. Anyhow, I wanna encourage a dialogue. I would encourage as best we can to maintain this. I would not suggest lowering the current service levels. I know, Dave, you suggested that. I don't see that. I don't wanna push more traffic up into the community. But I think we should look at generally perhaps a visioning process for the entire residential community, Newport Beach, and see if we can't create a balance here that works for everybody. But I can, personally, I think a six-lane highway is, is designing for a few, few times in the evening, reverse flow. Maybe you take parking away on one side of the highway at night and reverse it on the other side. But at the end of the day, there's gotta be solutions without calling this a six-lane arterial highway. I mean, what's next? Then you create a median out there that it's a raised median? It's a death knell. So, but I think the dialogue is headed clearly in the right direction and I would encourage that dialogue to continue. I think council has got their arms around it really well. Thank you.
Any others? All right, seeing now, my closed public comment. Bring it back to the city council.
Mayor Curry. This was brought to my attention by some of the, well, Mr. McKeon and others, property owners in the Mariners' Mile area. And what staff's presentation and this discussion have really raised to my mind is the unknowns that are around this issue, that we have forecasts of traffic, but we really don't understand how best to move that traffic and what the opportunities are for the adjacent land uses as we go forward. My colleague, councilmember Gardner, brought up the notion of has there been any type of visioning? I find it instructive that the council sat a number of citizens advisory panels. And yet, the only one that never was completed was the Mariners' Mile. I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity in the next budgeting session to appropriate necessary funds and restart that cap process to go through and continue the dialogue that Mr. Ridgeway has suggested and seek out opportunities to review not only Coast Highway, but review other land use issues in Mariners' Mile to resolve and address for once and for all the notion of access, size of lots, and the economic vitality along Mariners' Mile.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think, I think Councilman Petros is on the, on the right track there in the Land Use Amendment Committee, Land Use Amendment Amendment Committee, we were talking about Mariners' Mile. And it, I think it became clear to most of us in the committee that we really needed to do more study in the area. Maybe it starts off with the visioning process and ends up with a specific plan and maybe general plan amendment with the specific plan. But the, the issues, they were much too detailed to deal with in the format of a land use element. So it certainly needs a more in-depth look and I'd support, you know, getting it started with the visioning process and then see where it heads from there.
Very good. All right, thank you, everyone. Good presentation. Next item is Land Use Amendment Amendment, suggested land use changes.
The, as you mentioned, the city is undertaking an aggressive process of updating our land use element. And the council appointed a committee who has been meeting since July and they've met five times to date. And they're reaching a milestone come October 1st where they are gonna be finalizing the proposed land use changes that would be considered as part of the environmental impact report. So the council, we're asking you to review the potential changes this evening. It's an update. The committee was directing us to do so early in the process and try to ensure that you're apprised to where we are in the process as well as another opportunity for us to update the, the public to this, this effort. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Woody Tescher. He is from the Planning Center and is facilitating this effort and has done a tremendous job to date. He looks familiar to you. He helped us with the first general plan, so he's been helping us along this way. So I'm gonna turn it over to Woody.
Thank you, Brenda. Mayor Curry, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be with you. A little more gray hair than I think I was when I last saw you a few years ago on the general plan as well. As Brenda indicated, this is a status report. It's a work in progress. We started meeting with the committee just about two months ago in the middle of July. And the committee has been hard at work, meeting on almost a two-week cycle to basically consider its deliberations for possible amendments to the land use element. So what I'm gonna walk you through today is to basically review our starting point, basically the marching orders from the council to this committee as we are to move forward. I'm gonna share a few minutes and share with you the preliminary thinking, not to the recommendations yet, we will be on October 1st, but the preliminary thinking of the committee in terms of the potential land use modifications. I wanna focus upon whether there has been some general, what I would call informal consensus, and then revolve, review with you a number of areas where there are still issues on the table to resolve, and then share with you the schedule on how we're gonna get to the end zone from where we are today as, as well. Going back to the basic objectives, recognizing that the general plan, which was worked on so diligently with many of you, is an effective living and breathing document. Economies change over time, conditions on the streets change over time. In '06, the recession had not kicked in yet. We are in this evolutionary era of many things happening with our environments as well. So every so often, as the general plan and its implementation programs point out, the need to revisit every so often that element and the entirety of the plan for its continued relevance and its effectiveness in addressing the directions for the city. So basically, the marching orders were to say, okay, given the fact that we understand that there have been some considerations for, again, re-looking at some of the land uses within the city, the basic fundamental notion and instruction was that those land uses, and it's very opportune timing, given the discussion you just had on your prior two items, where the objective is that any of those changes might rearrange land uses, but within an overall concept of being trip neutral, i.e. the trips that were evaluated in the 2006 general plan and in the environmental documentation would not be exceeded by any of the trips that indeed are generated by any modification of the land use patterns here. Similarly, there was the fact that you had been working on the cap and a number of other efforts for other sub-areas of the city, Bablo Village, Lido Village, and so forth, and that the policies of the '06 general plan did not reflect that. And there's the need to fine-tune, if you will, those policies for the land use element to be consistent indeed with what you had been pursuing subsequently. And then also, legislation has changed. We did a half-climate change legislation back in '06. We did a half-complete streets legislation, et cetera. All kinds of factors that we need to look at this land use element for the standpoint of consistency with the legislation that has come into place as well as best practices, as well as also looking at the policies from the utility by the staff. Are the policies being effectively used by the staff, understood by staff in the community? And do they need to be revised? Those are the basic underlying objectives. I treat this, and I characterize this for many people, as sort of an oil and lube job to your car, a service. This is not junk, the old heap, the old junker car of, that you've had here in place because, which is no longer, it's no longer usable because it has been a junker car. But it's the fact that it's a time for indeed servicing the car to make sure it's fine-tuned and moves forward for the future as well. To that end, I just wanted to review with some very important principles that were established in '06 by that plan that this amendment is grounded in as well. One, and you've had this discussion here in your earlier topics about maintaining the character of the city, that in the policies and any of the modifications we looked at, that fundamental grounding about the importance of this as a special place and the characteristics that distinguish it have to be preserved as you move forward for the future as well. And then as we think about growth and change, that indeed the strategy for how we allocate and how we think about areas that are gonna grow and those that are gonna be preserved and served as they are, it's a conservative approach. This was never in '06, if you, those of you involved at that point in time, remember it had a diagram that showed that only about 3% to 4% of the city would be affected indeed by the land use recommendations at that point in time. And that, and the third bullet on this chart, that any changes would be particularly targeted to places that might not be economically performing well, that might be helpful in terms of reducing vehicle generation and trips, getting housing closer to where people work and where people shop as well, and indeed accommodating the fair share of regional growth that you have to address in your housing element. And again, that last bullet reiterates this notion of Newport Beach as a special place as well. The plan, and I won't go these, these in detail, these were the primary areas back in '06 that were indeed selected as targeted areas for change. The notion was to focus indeed growth back in '06 into these very limited areas while indeed restricting growth in other areas of the city. So thinking of indeed being very strategic about the locations in which growth to the benefit of the other areas of the town by preserving them with their uses and character as well. The committee has been looking at some 14 or so areas, shown here in the bullets, as possible areas of change or even reduction in terms of land use development capacity from what was defined in '06. And I'm gonna share with you some of the initial ideas from categories. Of these, there are, if I do my math correctly, about six of those areas in which the committee is considering the possibility of reducing the overall development capacity. You might ask, well, well, why? And I think the, the next photographs sort of illustrate the why part of this as well. There are a number of, particularly, commercial centers, which are basically built to their theoretical capacity, but were never constructed to the limits that indeed the '06 general plan specified for those areas. So in some cases, we may have had a capacity of 50,000, maybe only be built to 45,000 square feet of development as well. So we indeed are saving. We have a reservoir of capacity that contributed to the traffic analysis we had before that we may not need for the future. And also, there are areas that the use changed. For example, right across from the old civic center, the old city hall site, we now have a park on a piece of property that was designated in '06 for a commercial use. And obviously, that use will never build out to that particular capacity as well. And then the third category of what I call reduced capacity that the committee has been looking at are certain properties in which the property owner has suggested they do not want, even though there may be theoretical space for additional development to occur there, that they're willing to take back some of that development capacity and be able to transfer that to other areas of the city. This chart just demonstrates those areas and the reduction in capacities. I'm not gonna go through these in any detail if you have any questions about these. Again, they fall into those basic three categories. The majority of these, that they're proportion of the table, are those areas that have that characteristic of the commercial center that's basically built and will not expand, or very limited expansion. The park you see in there as well. And again, the possibility for reduction at Newport Coast as well. The second areas in terms of the categories the committee looked at were basically a question about whether or not there are existing study areas or statistical areas in which the densities that were defined in the general plan are adequate to create real use on the property. It's easy to paint a color on a map and it's easy to create a density from the technical documentation standpoint, but if it's not correlated to connect a market, an ability to actually perform that use, the question is, are these reasonable? So basically, we looked at two particular areas from that consideration. One was Lido Village and the area that you were just talking about, Mariners' Mile. And as we, looking at both of the areas, basically, the outgrowth of the economic analyses indicated and suggested that the development densities in the land use element and the land use classifications themselves were doable and achievable with appropriate zoning being implemented within this particular areas themselves. So indeed, what the committee has landed on in terms of preliminary direction is that from the standpoint of use and density and numbers for the particular, the achievement of that no net increase in the, the trips on an ADT basis, we didn't need to increase the capacities of these areas to achieve doable projects and then we'd have a neutral effect basically on traffic based upon the 2006 basis of the land use plan itself. And then in addition to that, there are a couple of, a number of areas in which the committee has looked at, a change of designation of the use itself. This, there are three specific areas called out. These would result in relatively modest increases in traffics. And when I say modest, I'm thinking in the neighborhood of 50 to 100 trips, so we're not talking about thousands of additional trips. There are three specific sites that have been addressed. One is, and these are shown here on the chart, just briefly, the, these are all very small parcels of land. In fact, the number two area up there is, you know, can't be more than about 5,000, 6,000 square feet of land area itself, very small. 6,000 square feet of land area itself, very small area, a particular land area. So these are adjustments really to reflect what's on the ground today. In the case of Palencia, what's on the ground today is a commercial use. It had been designated for residential, multifamily residential. The reality is, it's too small to develop, in effect, that higher capacity of housing, and so the recommendation is to begin to think about defaulting back to reflect what's on the ground today. Jumping to item number two, this is on Baboa and the Peninsula. It's, again, the very, very small parcel. It's adjacent to an area that is designated for mixed-use development, yet it was called out for an alternative use as well. And so to create consistency for the area, the recommendation was to make it consistent with what the adjoining property was designated, rather than calling it out as a separate use. The middle one, and I'll go to the photograph on the next page, is a site on Monrovia. This is a site that actually we are going to be going back to the committee on further discussion with. There were two options identified. This is an office building that's vacant. I believe the city owns this particular parcel. The current general plan designation is for multifamily residential. The recommendation from staff to the committee will be thinking about changing it to a public facility, given the public ownership of this particular use. So in all three cases that I've just reviewed here, and going back to this slide for a moment, it's a simple redesignation for the map and the category that would appear upon the land use map itself. And then the final grouping, if you will, categories are the areas in which potential additional capacity might be developed. And the additional capacity, again, with the overall fundamental concept, is that additional concept would basically have, while the additional trips might be generated from this additional development, they indeed would be offset by the reductions in development capacities of the other areas within the city that we just reviewed. And there are two locations, primary locations, on which it's discussed. One is the centerpiece, which the general plan iterated was to be indeed a very important economic and living and mixed-use centerpiece of the community, and that's the Fashion Island Newport Center area. You see on this slide, on the bottom right, the numbers that have been proposed for modification and preliminary numbers for this particular area. Again, the notion was to reduce capacity in other areas of the city, to add opportunities, again, for economic activity, to indeed create additional opportunities for revenue and jobs in the community to -- for the Newport Center Fashion Island area. And one other area, the city was approached by the Harbor Day School itself in terms of, it's a small private institutional use, is designated private institutional today, as a request for an increase of overall development capacity, somewhat of expansion, to increase additional students at that facility in the area, which would result in a small increase in trips. These are areas that now that we have had informal, if I use the term consensus, we haven't taken a formal vote with the committee yet, we'll be doing that at our next meeting, but informal direction from the committee seems to be reflective of the direction, indeed, and the sense of the committee in terms of being the right choice for future analysis. The airport area, we've unleashed, if you will, opened up a lot of discussion by interested individuals, property owners, and developers about changes in the airport area, and this graphic shows the five areas that have been designated. Of these, four have been also suggested changes with the basic suggestion that they would be trip neutral. In other words, if there's a change of use from one use to another, from, let's say, office to residential, et cetera, that that change would be grounded by the policy for the plan in the airport area, that any change out of use would result in no greater trips than would result from the existing on-the-ground current designation for the land use in the area. So if it's permitted office today, and you change off to office, that the trips from the residential would be the same as the office use within the area. So indeed, again, grounded in the notion of trip neutrality. We have had one request, shown in the upper left there, for Saunders Properties, for a doubling of density within the area. This is an area that should that recommendation or request, excuse me, be granted, would break that threshold of the possible of the trip neutrality within the area, because we're looking at probably possibilities from around 10,000 additional trips that would result from this as well. And you'll see here on this category, this is called the to-be-resolved category. So all of these areas, because so many of these requests for the airport area have come back to us relatively late in the process in the committee, receiving these as recently as our meeting last week, to show you how hot these are, we will be coming back to the committee with a further discussion of these at their next meeting as well. One of the other sort of questions that's raised here for the land use element, importantly for the land use element, if you remember, for the airport area, the general plan now calls for a maximum of 2,200 residential units as a total to be developed within the airport area, and indeed, of those, a certain percentage is set aside for what we call replacement units. What that means is you demolish an existing building, and you're replacing that existing building with housing. So you're taking out capacity for a use such as office, and you're building housing. There were a certain number of what we call additive units, which basically set on the underutilized portions of the properties, say, a surface parking lot, that housing could be built upon that area. Bottom line, without getting into the technical detail, there was about 2,200 units allocated within the area. We've had requests to basically increase the total housing capacity from that 2,200 number for that area. The committees had suggested from more than one property owner for -- or developer for that particular change to the land use element itself. But again, those requests, with the exception of the Saunders property, has been under the understanding that any change would be trip neutral. So we have a fundamental issue that has to be, again, readdressed by the committee. Should additional housing capacity be provided as an offset for loss of other non-residential uses, et cetera? Then the second item up here is particularly related to the question about the Saunders site. Is the committee willing to consider an increment of growth that would result in, indeed, exceeding the trip capacities of the area that are currently designated? We started that as the marching orders. We need to have that discussion with the committee once again, and if so, the committee has asked us to come back with them with some feedback on what's the implications for this whole planning process. Does this change the kind of environmental documentation that would have to be prepared for the land use element as well? And then it also begged, the last item here on the issues, is should indeed we move ahead maintaining trip neutrality, but as the discussion you just had here about Mariners Mile a few minutes ago, should this area, because of all the sort of interest in the area, be subject for a future, a subsequent planning study to determine, again, that appropriate mix of uses and the appropriate trips that has resulted in this area? Because this is one area of the city that has been a concentration of interest, and we haven't heard that anywhere else in the city, for discussion as well. And then there are a couple of other items to be resolved in our next committee meeting, and that's the appropriate designation on the lower castaway sites that you have had discussion with. The Irvine Company has been looking at some other, what I would call, minor modifications and reductions in moving of capacities around. Some of this is recent information that'll be presented to the committee at the next point in time. And then lastly, the other item are those policy revisions that need to be resolved for the overall policy. Overall schedule, we -- our next meeting is a very critical meeting on October 1st of the committee, because to meet the schedule and the objectives to indeed enable us to proceed with the November 2014 ballot for consideration of any amendment itself, we have to have in place the numbers and the quantities and the mapping that we've just been talking about by our next meeting on October 1st. So we'll be going to the committee on October 1st and asking the committee to confirm all of the land use changes. Why is October 1st, when you say November of next year? We have to prepare an environmental document, indeed, and look at what, indeed, a lot of your discussion you had just a few minutes ago, what are the traffic consequences of indeed any of these land use changes? Well, we've said we are going to have no net increase in trips on an overall citywide basis. We have to look at those segments, in those intersections that you were asking, the questions about what are the level of services? What are those levels of services on the segments and the intersections that the staff will be looking at and the consultant will be looking at, in addition to preparing the environmental document as well? That information will feed into any final recommendations and the results and the implications that will come to you from the advisory committee to the full council on any final amendment as well. So between October and February, we're preparing those traffic analyses, those detailed investigations, and the formal environmental document on this as well. And then also, during the same time period, roughly the same time period, our meetings with the committee are going to be focusing upon the policies and any revisions to the land use element policies for those purposes as well. So that concludes, as I said, we've been meeting for two months, and that's the tip of the iceberg of a lot of discussion, which a number of your members up here could elaborate upon those discussions as well. So we're here for any questions, conversation with you.
Mr. Selich.
Thank you. As you can see from the slides that Woody showed, one of the major things that we're wrestling with is the airport area with the unresolved issues up there. And I think one of the key issues that we're being faced with is we're being asked for additional housing units by the property owners, and they're kind of falling into the two categories that Woody mentioned. A certain number of them are being asked to increase the housing capacity in the area on a replacement unit basis, which means that we wouldn't add any trips. And then if you take the sum total of all of the -- of all of the requests, it appears that we would have to have some additive units, which would add some additional trips to the area. So that's, I think, one of the key issues that's floating around in all of the, what's it, five issues in the airport area. And I noticed, Woody, that you had on the screen here that the Lion Property was asking for additive. I thought they were asking for all replacement.
It's 700, I believe, and it's replacement?
Yes. I think the representative is here, they can probably clarify that.
I just noted that on the screen and...
And then the other comment that I'd like to make is that on the slide that shows the policy revisions, that one of our intents is to also incorporate the appropriate policies from the Lido Marina Village concept plan that the council adopted, incorporate that into the general plan as well as the central Baboa.
Mr. Mayor, I'm also on that committee with Councilman Selich, and I feel very confident that the committee can look at the information we get on the earlier proposals and analyze the traffic impacts and come back with a recommendation to council for what would go on the ballot. I feel far less confident that the committee should even be doing that for the airport because it seems to me that so much has changed in that area in the last seven years, despite a recession. I just drove up there to go to a soccer match, and I was like, oh my God, it's just amazing how much has changed. And to do this in a piecemeal fashion, when we might want a new vision for that area, I hate to see our residents, our businesses, not being able to take advantage of some of the things that are going on there, but I also hate to think that we were going to try to plan that whole area in this tight, tight timeframe. So one of the things I really would like from the council today is direction on whether we should try to just segment that and say, we're not going to deal with the airport this time around, or whether we want to try to do it all in a very, to me, what would be a rushed fashion.
Senator, you want to speak?
I guess in direct answer to Councilman Gardner's question, I would like to see the airport area move forward at this point in time. I think we've all realized that it's a rather significantly underutilized area. There's significant opportunity there. I would love to see it worked out on a trip-neutral basis, and so everyone might not get everything, but it seems to me that if we included it in the exercise this time, that would give us the flexibility to work through it and not have to start another whole process.
Well, I guess having sat through the meetings and seeing we have a proposal for something that would make us really reconsider our land uses there. I mean, are we going to make a, as it is in Irvine, you know, with a lot of residential, or are we going to? Our initial vision of it was it was very segmented as far as where the residential would be and how much there would be, and this is in many ways going to change that if we go with the, really analyze all the plans. I don't see how we can analyze the plans with the Saunders proposal and keep it in any way neutral. We will have to make some big decisions there. And I mean, we could, but it seems to me that to wait a year and give ourselves more time on that segment might produce a more coherent view of the whole thing.
Well, I just think that we could work through it, and I'd hate to see it thrown into a two-year, three-year additional delay to go through the process again. And we also have to work with the airport authority area up there, and there's a pretty significant line that you can see that is the sound line through there, and so some of these properties, it seems to me, is pretty logical in their request. Some of their properties are not very logical in their request. I guess I don't see it as that hard of a decision-making process. I do have a couple of the comments, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I was interested, and I don't have an address, but the very northwest corner of this city, it's on Red Hill, behind the Santa Ana Country Club, is a very, very old, I would, by my definition, substandard apartment complex area. And there was some thought to redo that. I saw some plans at one point in time that I thought were pretty exciting, and what happened to that? Did they, my understanding, they submitted to your committee for consideration, and so what happened?
I don't recall that got to the committee point, but we did meet with them at a staff level, and that property is actually in the 65 CML that has limitation on the amount of residential that could be placed there, and they are seeking to increase the residential density on that property. So from a staff standpoint, we saw that it was being significantly challenged as to what they're proposing.
And so what happened to it?
We provided them our information, and we have not heard from them since.
All right, well, I would certainly encourage staff to try to work with them and see what can be done there, because that is an entrance to our city, and it would make a significant change to that entrance. Just a comment, I'm very surprised to see Monrovia being thought of as a public facility. Did I miss a meeting?
No, you would have to hear Kim Brandt's thinking for that, which I don't know if Leonie or Brenda have that. Kim's not with us today, but go ahead.
I can speak to that, actually. That property is one of our properties that are subject to abatement, in that it currently is an office use located in a residential zone, so that it is subject to abatement. I think the timeframe might have another eight years. So by designated a public facility, it removes that abatement issue, so that if the city seems to want to use that for public facilities in the future, it may do so. If not, it could re-designate it at that time.
And what if we don't want to use it for a public facility in the future?
We re-designate it at that time.
And how laborious of a process is that, then?
We thought it was fairly simple when we looked at it, but...
It would be a general plan amendment. I mean, essentially, the existing office building can stay forever, as long as it's not in a residential district.
All right, my definition of general plan amendment is not...
No, mine neither, I was forgetting that. But I don't think it requires, I think it's an action that the council can take, rather than subject to green light, for instance.
It would not be subject to green light unless it tripped a threshold. Just changing the designation from, say, public facilities to general office, if you're not increasing the density or allowed floor area, then it would not be subject to green light or even really a green light review.
I don't know why we would change a piece of property to a zone unless we thought we had a use for it.
Well, and I think part of the thought process was its location. It is adjacent next to the Banning Ranch property. It is not in conformance right now. It didn't particularly make sense for it to be residential, so by zoning it public facilities, in theory, that is the most traffic use that you could have. The suggestion is for it to be public facilities.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of items, very picky unit items. On the Harbor Day School site, you were referring to an intensification of about a .05 FAR, and what I thought I heard you say was to accommodate an increase in the enrollment. Please understand, Harbor Day is under a conditional use permit where they cannot allow enrollment to increase over 408 students. So while they may be requesting an increase in the size of their facilities, their classrooms are like closets, and that increase in allowing... And that increase in allowable footprint does not go hand-in-hand with an increase in enrollment and therefore would be trip-neutral. If they ever wish to want to come forward with an increase in enrollment, that would have to come through on a separate CUP. So as you model that site, please consider that to be a zero-sum game. I am with my colleague, Mr. Hill, on the Monrovia site. I would think if we wanted to do anything on a public use there, I would suggest it would be an overlay type of approach. We have paid good money for that site, and to devalue it by putting it into public use at this point presupposes an outcome that we're not there yet on. There are other alternatives for public uses in that area, and I would suggest that, given the Banning Ranch and what might happen there that we don't know, let's leave it as it is with the supposition that it could, in fact, go to that area, public use.
Just let me clarify before you go on on that. But did you say that public use has the highest trip rate?
No, it doesn't.
I'm sorry, I just thought that's what I heard.
I do not believe that's the case, actually.
Okay, I just...
So therefore, if we were to try and re-designate it, it would, in fact, be a general plan amendment. It would increase more than 100 trips, and we would be at green light. And I would hate to do that now, given what we're trying to do into the future. I'm moving along as quickly as I can. We have, Woody, I believe you said, 2,200 units up in the airport area. There are density bonus provisions in that, and I'm wondering, as you model that 2,200, I believe you should have a traffic threshold that acknowledges the density bonus and allows capacity for those units because they can be asked for, and we must grant them.
Yeah, just a point, Councilmember Petros. Back when the EIR was written in '06, we actually analyzed 4,500 total units in that area. So the council and its deliberations, that was our starting point with our discussions with the council in '06, and they cut back to a 2,200 capacity. So within the environmental, if you will, clearance or terminology of evaluation, we're going to be fine with that analysis.
And then on policy revisions, we have been a leader in the county in our efforts to comport with the Sustainable Community Strategy and all of the SB 375 provisions. I'm hopeful and will be looking forward to more efforts or reflecting the efforts that the city are doing now so that we can continue to march hand-in-hand with that. The bigger issue as it relates to the airport area, I am of a similar mind to Mayor Protem Hill in that I'm interested to see what the traffic effects of the proposals are, and if, in fact, those traffic effects are such that they would either be trip-neutral or not create an environmental document outcome that we would have to re-designate any roads in the area, that I think that we should include it in this for the very reason that it would be something that could be permissible under the framework of the existing general plan and might allow us the flexibility to really start to vision now under a general plan that gives us a little bit of elbow room to do so. So those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing no other...
Just one more thing that maybe you can comment on at the end when we're all through. Would you feel that way if what we're going to get at our next meeting is that we wouldn't be able to make our deadline? That we would have, we would not be able to get all the documentation done by the time it would have to go on the ballot? So just that would be something else we may have to consider at that point, and it'd be nice to have some direction on that as well.
Okay, I've got some comments on this too, but I'm going to wait till after you hear from the public. So thank you, Woody. Are there members of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As we heard in 2000, the voters of this city approved the so-called Green Light Charter Amendment. Those of us who voted for it thought it would give us an opportunity to vote on the merits of individual development proposals exceeding certain growth thresholds. In 2006, at the council's urging, a majority of the voters agreed to reset all those thresholds by adopting the 600 pages of a comprehensive general plan, billed as a vision for our city through the year 2025. I can't say I've read all 600 pages, but I did look at the first page, which made voters a number of promises, including that by adopting the new plan, it would, when fully implemented, reduce traffic by 29,000 trips per day and reduce the potential for commercial, office, and industrial space by 1.5 million square feet. I don't think it was ever a goal to bring back traffic, potential traffic that didn't develop. I've attended each of the land use advisory committee meetings, and I have to say I leave them completely baffled, for with no announced change in the overall vision for the future of our city, I see a grab bag of special interest requests to modify the land use plan in ways that are consistent neither with the idea that we should have a chance to vote individually on major developments, nor with the vision and the promise of reducing traffic and limiting the potential for commercial, office, and industrial space. The Irvine Company's proposal to add half a million square feet and 500 new homes to Newport Center seems the most flagrantly inconsistent of these. Yet the only explanation I have ever heard of this is that staff, our own city staff, identified a unique opportunity for growth there. I have to ask why our city staff was spending our tax dollars looking for growth opportunities? For if I quoted the 2006 general plan correctly, the people for whom they and you work said we don't want to become Manhattan or Miami Beach. We already feel built out and congested, and we voted to hold the line or even contract over the next 20 years. If the Irvine Company or the Saunders Properties wants to try to convince us that it's wise to do something else, I think they should be doing that on their own dime and not on ours. Thank you.
Other speakers, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carol McDermott. I am representing several property owners in the airport area. And if I could ask to have that map put back up on the screen, I just would like to comment that we have taken seriously the objective of trying to achieve a traffic-neutral plan. And as a certified planner, as a longtime resident of Newport Beach and a participant in the general plan going all the way back to the year 2000, I do understand the process that we went through. I certainly understand the objectives. I understood what the visioning process said about supporting development in Newport Center and supporting development in the airport area. While you can't see my pointer on your screen, on the big screen up here, Lyon Homes' request for replacement dwelling units, and I think that was corrected in the testimony, and the opportunity for a possible new vehicle sales, and the Hangers property, all of those are traffic-neutral with the exception of the Hangers, which had a very small increase to allow retail and commercial and restaurants in this location to serve the many, many workers and people attending hotels and conferences in the area. And that very small trip increase might be able to be accommodated by the changes that are being made elsewhere and to create the kind of balance that I think the citizens in our community are asking for. So this request for additional additive units would apply to any of the mixed-use areas. The auto dealership potential is there. The Hangers property is another component that I think all can be accommodated in a very workable review of the environmental impacts. And I would respectfully ask your favorable direction to staff to retain this, these proposals in the plan because of our efforts to work with the objective of close to traffic neutrality. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mayor, I have a question. Yeah, I'm still confused by the nomenclature on the Lyon Homes. Are these replacement units or not? There's 550 additive DUs up there on the screen and 1,650 replacement units, but the total's all replacement. I'm still not following that.
Well, I'm not following the way it's represented on this exhibit up there. We had asked for 700 additional replacement units because what we have here on our site is a series of office buildings that would be eliminated in replacement with residential. While that number speaks to things happening on other parcels, there's a residential proposal here that would be replacement. There is the coal company's units, of course, that have a conceptual plan approval, and then the units that we would request. So we thought that, given the modeling that was done under the old general plan, which evaluated 4,500 units, and that included the kind of density bonuses that could be accommodated, that to consider adding these replacement units to accommodate the interest in the airport area that is just starting to happen, given the approval for the shop-off 1,244 in this location. So the idea was to provide for replacement, understanding the potential for traffic neutrality under those circumstances.
I still don't get it. Who did this slide, and can somebody explain it to me?
Let me clarify. In the airport area, a total of 2,200 units are permitted in the airport area. Of those 2,200, 550 are permitted to be additive. 1,650 are permitted to be replacement. The request is to increase the replacement units to, by 700. So you'd have a total of 2,350 replacement units in addition to the 550 additives. So they're basically asking for a total of 2,900 units total in the airport area.
Okay, so it's called replacement units because it's residential coming in place of commercial development?
That's correct.
Okay.
You, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Patrick Strater. I'm with Starpoint Ventures, and I'm here this evening representing Mr. Saunders on his proposal to the committee. Mr. Saunders has been involved in analyzing these properties from the early 90s, when he was first approached by the city about potential opportunities to redevelopment, redevelop that block. Over the course of the last few decades, he's acquired over 60% of the ownership of that block, and since July of this year, he's been attempting to sort of follow this committee process and attempt to fit within it as best possible. I will admit to you that that has been difficult to do, given the very compressed timeline of two months, to file an application with this committee that would be fully refined, fully thought out. I'll freely admit that has not happened yet. What has happened is Mr. Saunders has come forward with a request to the committee that, in order to incentivize the redevelopment of a block that most of the buildings were built in the 70s, and is a very important block for anybody arriving at John Wayne Airport. It is one of the gateway properties into the city of Newport Beach. In fact, he filed a requested zoning called the Coastal Gateway Overlay Zoning as sort of a nod to the importance of this block. And what that zoning attempted to do was basically establish a 1.0 FAR across this roughly 26-acre property, including those owned by Mr. Saunders as well as not owned by him. The attempt was to take a look holistically at the block and then to add a little bit of residential on the area that you can see to the east side of the 65 CNEL noise contour line there, basically where the retail center is today. So whether that would be termed replacement units because it would be replacing retail or whether it would not be replacement because there could be mixed-use zoning where the retail and the residential would work compatibly, that's still what is attempting to be worked out with staff. And whether this total of 1.0 FAR across the 26 acres is the proper application, that's another thing that Mr. Saunders would be looking to refine in this process. If it would be easier to take just his properties and just look for a larger entitlement on those properties in order to encourage redevelopment, in order to have a lower number of trips, then that's something we can work out with staff as we continue to go through this process. But again, the original application was filed as sort of a, I called it in the committee, aspirational zoning. It was filed to basically say to the committee, this is what we would love to do for this important block. Now help us figure out how to fit within the process of what the city's moving forward on. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to speak to them.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please come forward.
All right, seeing that, I'm going to close for the comment. Let me just make my comments on this. I think actually that four of these airport proposals are probably easily accommodated. I think they're well thought out, and I think they work. I think Mr. Saunders needs to assess his aspirations and come back here with something realistic very quickly. So I agree with Councilmember Hill and Mr. Petros about wanting these included, but I also share Councilmember Gardner's concerns that we're not good at delaying this process while we try and, you know, play around with this. So time is of the essence, and I would encourage moving forward accordingly. Any other comments or directions to staff on this? Okay, thank you. Visit Newport, annual presentation.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Gary Sherwin. I'm the president, CEO of Newport Beach and Company. It is our pleasure to give you our annual report on the activities of Visit Newport Beach. Before I get into my very tight presentation today, I'd like to introduce Debbie Snively, who is the chairman of the board and is the general manager of the Newport Beach Marriott Hotel and Spa.
Thank you, Gary. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As Gary just said, I am Debbie Snively, general manager of the Newport Beach Marriott Hotel and Spa, as well as the chairperson for Newport Beach and Company and Visit Newport Beach. Let me first thank you for your support of our hospitality industry. Your commitment to keeping this city beautiful, clean, and safe is one of the most important factors in our success as a destination. All of us who run hotels, operate restaurants, own stores, and are in the business of attracting visitors are very appreciative of your dedication and community excellence. I am pleased today to be joined by our executive committee, including Linda Beimfor, Homeblower Cruises and Events, Daniel Cooper Schmidt, Hyatt Regency Newport Beach, Candace Visconti, Access Destination Services, Homer Bloudow, former city manager, Tom Johnson, Johnson Media, and Denny O'Neill, your appointee to our executive committee. We are here today to give you a very brief overview of our work during the last year. Gary will be doing that very shortly, but please let me leave you with this. The work that Visit Newport Beach does for us is absolutely critical to the success of our hospitality business. You might think that a company like Marriott International, which is a huge international entity, wouldn't need a community organization like Visit Newport Beach, but believe me, we do. This group works hard because when it comes down to business, it is what happens on the local level that ultimately delivers the business for hotels like mine as well as others. Please know we live in a very competitive environment and that this community is well-served by this organization. Secondly, we are pleased that our Tourism Business Improvement District Board of Directors has approved a 1% increase in our assessment, and we are doing it nine months early. We are doing it because it works. The work of Visit Newport Beach is effective, and we need even more of it. We are asking, however, that the city also demonstrate good faith to the hospitality community by extending our TOT contract to coincide with the T-Bid, which means a seven-year extension. Thank you again for all of your support of our industry and Newport Beach and Company.
Thank you, Debbie. I know you have a very long evening ahead, so I'm going to cut to the chase, and we're going to get into the metrics right away as to how the hospitality industry right now is performing, and then we'll briefly go over some of the activities that Visit Newport Beach has been undertaking. Beach has been undertaking. Just so that you know, you probably know that TOT has been quite healthy this year. This is sort of the year-to-date as of August. You'll see that the numbers are all pretty good. Average daily rate up 9%, RevPAR up 10%. RevPAR is really the key barometer for success of the hospitality industry. It's revenue per available room. That's up 10%. Overall revenue is up about 10.6%. You'll notice that occupancy has essentially been flat. A large reason of that is because the Hyatt had rooms offline because they renovated their property. All the rooms were completely redone, their pool areas were redone, the entranceway has been redone, and that's to complement some of the other improvements they began a couple of years ago in the lobby area. We expect that this flatness will probably continue because Debbie is just about to start a renovation program at the Marriott, which will begin this fall. It'll stop right around the holidays and then resume shortly after that. Where we really see some real benefit, though, is that people who are coming here are paying more for each room that they stay in, and that's actually a very healthy thing for the hospitality industry. One of the months I do want to point out to you is August. We had a pretty amazing August. If you look at the chart of how we performed, it was kind of going along fairly well through the year. August, we had a pretty big spike. You'll see occupancy was up nearly 3%, but average daily rate was up over 16%, revenue per available room over 19%, and overall hotel revenue was up almost 20%. That was just from the month of August. So when the heat is on and the weather is good and the morning bloom burns off fast, that's great for business. So even though people complain about heat, I love it. Here's the big news, which you probably have heard, and I'll reiterate again. The biggest news to come to Newport Beach will be the Bowl Championship Series. This is a piece of business we work very hard to book. It began two years ago and it will be upon us in about three and a half months. This means that for the Bowl Championship Series, which will play its last game under the existing format in January of 2014, it'll be January 6th, all the teams, both the teams, the Alumni Association, the bands, all of those folks will be here in Newport Beach starting right after Christmas. They'll stay pretty much through the game. We don't know who those folks are yet because the BCS teams are not identified until early December. But we hosted this event back in 2010 and it was a phenomenal economic impact for the city. Of course, January is usually a fairly slow time in most communities coming off the holidays. The fact that we will be in a sellout condition, actually even pushing into Costa Mesa is extraordinary. The other big impact of this, of course, is that the Marriott will be 100% filled with media from around the United States. Their ballrooms will be turned to ESPN Studios, and if they do the same thing that they did in 2010, they'll set up an ESPN studio on Inspiration Point, so we'll have some beautiful views of Corona del Mar being shown to the rest of the country when everyone's under snow and unpleasant weather. So the media impact, to me, is almost as valuable as the actual economic impact. The other great thing about this is that these folks are going to be coming and only going up to Pasadena one day. The rest of the time, they're going to have time and money to burn, which means they're going to be shopping and eating and having a great time. It is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity.
We should get a station set up at the end of the bridge.
Yeah, should. There you go. So you'll see that it is, from a citywide perspective, we don't get a lot of these citywide conventions. Most of them are self-contained, but this one will certainly be impacting everyone. Let me talk a little bit about our room night sales performance. This includes how we book BCS. The group room effort is undertaken through our T-Bid. These are our sales managers that go out there and sell Newport Beach to meetings and conventions throughout the United States. This is really, all of this is funded solely by the T-Bid and those T-Bid hotels. You'll see where we have had our growth, and the real growth is because we've had the resources with the T-Bid to go out there and hustle for more business. In 2011 is when we booked BCS. We thought that was going to be the high watermark for us. You don't get many BCSs, but last year we also had a really strong banner year. The T-Bid has been so successful in terms of booking group room nights that the Island Hotel has now petitioned to join the T-Bid, which means that every major group hotel in Newport Beach will be a part of the T-Bid and will be a part of that assessment. The Island has seen the value of what we're trying to do here and the value of working together to try to craft these deals that bring in the business to the community. So this year, by topping over 30,000, I think surprised all of us. It was a great surprise, but our team worked extraordinarily hard to get us there, and you can see how we've continued to grow over the last couple of years.
Gary?
Yes?
No, a little bit of this is probably due to the recovering economy.
A little bit. But if you look back in 2008, we weren't booking 30,000 or 2007.
So I'm just saying, but do we have comparisons, I mean, with, say, Huntington Beach or anything to see, so we can see, yeah, we're really improving, we're showing, we're not just duplicating what they're doing, but we're doing better?
Well, you know, the hard part is an apples-to-apples comparison. And Huntington Beach has one real big group hotel with 50,000 meeting space, 50,000 square feet of meeting spaces, much more than what we have here. We compete against them a lot for larger group pieces of business, and then they have the Hilton. Their product isn't the same, their hotel packages aren't the same. If I can give you a direct comparison to any city, I'd love to be able to do it. We've been struggling with that. I think the key, though, is that we've been able to compete successfully against these other cities. Because we do go up against Costa Mesa, we do go up against Huntington Beach, we go up against Anaheim, LA, and San Diego and Palm Springs. The fact that we're getting more market share, and I will tell you, back in 2006, 2007, when the market was going along pretty well, we weren't booking anywhere close to this. We were probably booking at 67,000 room nights.
And you said market share. Do you have any slides on that?
Not specifically to market share on that one. If you'd like, I'll be happy to get you more information on that. Here's the return on investment with the Tourism Business Improvement District. Our budget this year was about 1.6 million. The direct revenue booked out of those 30,000 room nights was 6.5 million, which, as you can see, pretty healthy percentage. We also employ a, what we call an economic calculator. This has been produced by the Destination Marketing Association International in Washington, DC. They actually create a calculator that was specific to each destination, which means it calculates spending in for Newport Beach, our tax structure, all of those things. So the overall economic value, this includes not only hotels, but shopping and restaurants, shopping and restaurants, as well as all the other ancillary spend, total of about 15.3 million, just for the meeting aspect of it. This doesn't include any of our leisure aspects, just the group aspects. This is our brand promise, and I show this to you, and I show this to you every year, really so that you can understand again the approach of how we go about selling Newport Beach. People say, how do you sell it? What are the messages? How do you paint the picture? This is how we paint the picture. This is our guiding star. Everything that we do in terms of deciding how our visitor guide looks, how our sales missions operate, how our PR is undertaken, all is really about this brand promise. And you'll see, we don't promote a monolith of Newport Beach. We promote a Newport Beach with a variety of integrated experience, and we celebrate the neighborhoods that make up the community. The other reason I also include this is also because, again, I want to reiterate a point that Debbie had, which is to thank you. Because this brand promise conveys a certain expectation of experience and a certain expectation of what people are going to see and feel, what it's going to look like when they get here. We tell the story. You ultimately help us create the product that is successful. You're the ones that invest in infrastructure, you invest in public safety, you create and maintain the look that makes the city what it is. So you're as integral to this brand promise as anything we might be able to do on the marketing side, so I want to thank you again for that. This is our anticipated budget coming up for the next year from a TOT perspective. Again, this is forecast based on the 18% that we collect, about a little over 3.5 million. The T-Bid, we're looking at about 1.7 million. The Island Hotel would probably be generating about 100,000. We think by the time the T-Bid is hopefully renewed and up and running with the Island's inclusion, which would be sometime around the first of the year or about halfway into our fiscal year. And hopefully, if it gets up sooner, we'll get some more money out of that. But again, the T-Bid is totally focused on group. TOT is focused on overall leisure marketing that benefits everyone in the city. These are our organizational priorities for the year. You've heard a lot about Newport Beach and Company and our desire to try to help and scale what we're doing to help more organizations throughout the city. We are continuing to move in that direction, and we'll talk a little bit about that down the road. We also want to work closer with our conference sales clients. Working with our clients is very important. A few of you have been on a few of our client events that we've hosted. We do a big one during the Christmas Boat Parade. We do some throughout the year. We always welcome you if you'd like to attend and meet some of our clients from around the country. We want to continue to foster that engagement. The LA drive market, it sounds kind of obvious that the people in our backyard would be our easiest customers, but believe it or not, we haven't had as many people as we would like. This summer, we started seeing a change. The hotels report a lot more folks coming from LA. You'll hear us on the radio a lot in LA. We do a lot of promotions with LA-based media. That's certainly a very easy market for us to try to tap into, but sometimes we're competing against Palm Springs or Santa Barbara. And then finally, our international efforts. We'll be talking about that shortly. Newport Beach has specific efforts in the United Kingdom and Australia, and we work on a county-wide initiative to now explore China. These are some of the publications that we do. You probably see our visitor guide. People say our visitor guide's outdated, where everyone's going to the web. I'd like to think that. It would certainly be easier on us, but frankly, the visitor guide is as in high demand as ever. We have more people asking about it. We now have to print it twice a year. We have people from around the world that ask for it. It's turned into sort of a lifestyle magazine, as well as being a utilitarian type of publication. It's distributed throughout the city, as well as the ones that we send out before people get here. We also have a great stays, and that's really to focus on alternative lodging. So the home rental markets, some of the smaller boutique hotels, they wanted a little bit more profile, so we've created that as well. But we also load it up on CDs and USPs and such. We also create a lot of maps and calendars. One of the big questions that I had put to us by city staff a few years ago is, can we get a centralized calendar of events that details everything going on? We've been happy to pull that together and we do that. And we also put together a brand-new Newport Beach map, which our concierge love because we break it down by different neighborhoods. And of course, on the far right, you'll see the maps that we have in the various city kiosks that are located around town as well. Up at the top is a special new pocket guide, and that's where our police officers, and I'm going to be talking about that in a moment, thanks to Jay Johnson over here. One of the interesting things I thought you'd want to know is that we are now, as a destination, really having to embrace technology even more than we have before. It's always been very important, but we are a mobile society now. This is an interesting statistic that Orange County ranks eighth in terms of destinations that are actually hotels that are booked using mobile devices, even more so than Paris. So we really had to have a very strong mobile-first platform in order to sell Newport Beach effectively. We've also redesigned our website. As you know, people now have iPads, as well as desktops, as well as mobile devices. We needed to have a website that could adapt to all of those different formats and also come up with some new innovative content that would be engaging. We have a brand-new Newport Beach Live Cam now, so if you're ever interested in looking at the Newport Pier and you're on the other side of the country, you can see a live coverage of what's going on down there. It's a really dynamic, very innovative, and I think very brand-centric website, as well as offer a lot of utilitarian value for our visitors who are looking to find out what there is to do. This is an example of sort of the overall graphics of what the site looks like. You'll see it kind of marries the look of our visitor guide. Again, we sell Newport Beach as an aspirational destination. This is a lifestyle destination where people come and they want to be like us. They want to come and experience this in all of its different manifestations. So that's why we have imagery that's big and bold and kind of paints a picture of what the community is really all about. And of course, we also have features like online hotel bookings so that we can actually consummate the sale, because we wouldn't be salespeople unless we asked for the order, right? We have a mobile app that we began last year. It operates in real-time and GPS, so if you have the app and load it up, it'll tell you where you are on the map, and it will show you restaurants near where you are standing at any given time. It will share with you shopping that is close to you at any given time. It's on iTunes, it's free, Tony. And it's a very useful tool for trying to figure out if you want to do something and want to walk to it rather than getting in a car. And it's, I think we have probably about 8,000 or 9,000 downloads so far on that. Social media, everyone talks about the role of social media. It is critically important in the travel industry, perhaps more so than others, that social media play that role. We have a full-time person dedicated to responding to inquiries on Twitter. We have people who, we have an Instagram account, we have all those things that allow people to communicate with us. People expect responses quickly, so we have to have it manned pretty much almost 24/7 so that we can engage one-on-one with our visitors. There's nothing worse than having a question that kind of is left out there. But you get a lot of people saying, where is the best burger in town? Or where can I find some spaghetti at 11 o'clock at night? So we have to be able to be prepared to answer those questions. But social media is very, very important in our business. Public relations, most cost-effective tool of communications. We have a two-person PR staff. They work very hard on getting our message out, both with electronic media and print. We bring journalists in, we show them around, we communicate with them, and we do this also for special events. We did a very big extensive program with KTLA during Restaurant Week, and we had Vicki Higgins, who's our Chief Marketing Officer, actually went to the studio and walked through some dishes. So we need to be able to engage the media because it really is an incredibly influential and very cost-effective way to tell our story. International, that's one that everyone seems to kind of be very interested in, and we continue to have a very strong presence there. Our representation firm in the United Kingdom is a company called Black Diamond. They also represent the state of California. Gate7 is our representation firm in Australia and Sydney. And then through the Orange County Visitor Association, we have AVA reps. They have an office in Shanghai, they're opening up an office in Beijing. China is expected to be the largest international market into California within the next three years. Visa reform has changed the game pretty considerably on that, so we want to be able to play, but we want to do it cost-effectively, and it is better for us to do it as a county rather than city-specific. What we try to do when we work these markets is, the way people buy travel overseas is you have to go to a tour operator, you get a catalog, you open up the catalog. If you're not featured in that catalog, you don't get purchased. So what we try to do is work very hard to work with those tour operators to make sure that Newport Beach product is being sold. So when we say 58 UK wholesalers are selling Newport Beach, these are the people the consumer buys from. So we work hard to make sure our product is featured there. The same thing goes for Australia. Those cabs, which you've seen, we now had another fleet of about 16 of them this summer. We've had them before. What we also try to do, if you've been there, they have a little flip-up chair. On the back of the chair, there's actually a Newport Beach vacation package. When we did this previously, we did it with Virgin Holidays. We had a package that included air, stay at the Hyatt, and a car rental. We sold over 680 of those packages just through our cabs in London. So it was a great way to try to quantify some of what we've been able to do. Also, I think this is also a good point, just to clarify one point, too, since we're talking international. Of course, we know none of these flights are going to be flying into John Wayne Airport. They're all going to be going into LA. But I do want to clarify one position as it relates to John Wayne Airport. I know there's been concern that I've been involved in an effort to, you know, help promote air travel into John Wayne Airport. I'll say it again, I will be very clear about it. We have no interest in trying to complicate your efforts to get the settlement agreement done. We completely support that. We want it done. I have stepped away from the responsibilities of working on that committee. I have other colleagues at the Orange County Visitor Association that are doing that. This group, by the way, has had one meeting that was done five months ago. There's no meetings even scheduled, so I don't really know what we're stepping away from. But I just wanted to clarify that it is our interest to try to help you get that settlement agreement finished and not make life more difficult. Finally, as we wrap up here, police hospitality training. Last year, we announced that we had a partnership with Chief Johnson and in terms of training his officers and civilians on Newport Beach, so that we can have hospitality ambassadors out there. Those little pocket guides that I referenced earlier fold out and actually are a mini map that our officers can show to visitors when they're there. I'm pleased to report that the entire Newport Beach Police Department now has been trained in Newport in Newport Beach hospitality. They've been educated about our visitors, how to better service them. We, we think that we have probably one of the most visitor-friendly police forces out there right now. We know that they still have to go after the bad guys, and we respect that, but we know that a lot of our visitors are not bad guys. They're actually customers, and we want to try to keep coming back. So Chief Johnson, thank you very much for all of your commitment to making this happen. We're really proud of this, and I, I think this is a program that other police departments hopefully can embrace as well. Newport Beach TV, we are continuing to dialogue with the city regarding Newport Beach TV. I know that there's some thought of, well, all the programming that's on Newport Beach TV that people rely on from council meetings to board supervisors, school boards, pick-a-pet, nobody wants to see that go away. So we don't want it to go away either, but we think that there's some ways that we can help through our marketing expertise to help freshen up that channel. And so we continue the dialogue with the city to try to make that happen. We don't want to minimize any of the good things that, that Newport Beach TV is already doing, but we think there's some great stories that can celebrate the really good things that are going on in this city. There's some people, places, and things that I think our residents would like to know. And, and not only our residents, but I think our visitors would like to know. I don't think these audiences are necessarily mutually exclusive. So we continue the dialogue, and we look forward to hopefully kind of getting it to resolution, because we think this is a wonderful opportunity for the residents in Newport Beach to learn more about what the city offers. Last year, you also approved an agreement to try to encourage some of our business improvement districts, who are going to be converting into merchant associations, to see if they might be willing to contract with us to assist them with their marketing efforts. Two of them have. We've developed a wonderful working relationship with the Balboa Merchants Association. We're working with them on a number of marketing initiatives, including a new website, including some activities relating to the Christmas Boat Parade. The Corona Del Mar, they're very interested in having their website updated, so we're working with them on, on that, too. So I think these relationships so far are, are being very productive, and we're continuing to make progress on that. Finally, my last slide here is, we were named by Orange County Visitor Association one of the best places to work. That was really based on confidential surveys that were sent out to our staff. I'm really pleased with that. I think we are a very labor-driven organization. Our people make this organization. You can't have good programs without good people. It's not all that different, I think, from city government. And I'm really pleased that we have, I think, one of the best teams in the country. To close out my remarks, I'd like to bring up former mayor and our executive committee member, Denny O'Neill.
Curry, good afternoon. Mayor Curry and members of the council. It was approximately two years ago when I applied for and was appointed as the City Council's representative to provide oversight on the Visit Newport Beach, Inc. Board of Directors and Executive Committee. At that time, I really didn't have that much knowledge about the tourism hospitality industry. However, I was quite knowledgeable about nonprofit corporations and how they're organized and, and what their responsibilities are. Since my appointment, I have attended the quarterly meetings of the Board of Directors of Visit Newport Beach, Inc., which now has a parent entity, Visit Newport Beach and Company. So I attend those board meetings on a quarterly basis. I've attended each one of the monthly executive committee meetings of those organizations and have learned a great deal about marketing tourism in Newport Beach and the sales of conferencing here in our city. I am impressed with the professionalism of this organization and the transparency within which they operate. I've also had occasion since my appointment to meet and talk to a number of the councilmen throughout the year to keep them up to speed on the activities of, of Newport Beach and Company, as well as the city manager. In addition, I've met with most of the general managers of the hotels to keep that relationship going. I'd like to continue to advise the council that, in my opinion, this organization is in full compliance with all the rules and regulations that govern nonprofit corporations, especially in the areas of fiduciary duties, compliance, and avoidance of conflicts of interest and excessive benefit transactions. I truly appreciate the appointment. I'm getting a great deal of worthwhile experience out of this appointment, and look forward to my continued involvement with the organization and my continued reporting back to your body on the activities. With that, we will be here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Denny, and thank you, Gary, and Debbie, and to all of the members of the board. Let me simply say on behalf of the city, thank you for the work that you put in to make Visit Newport and Newport Beach Co. a success. And the success speaks in the numbers, and I think most residents need to know that tourism revenues from our hotel taxes is the third-largest revenue source in the city, and that a lot of the great services that we have in Newport Beach are because of the dollars that our visitors spend when they come to, to visit Newport Beach. So congratulations for a great year, and thank you all for, for what you do. Let me open this up for questions. Councilmember Gardner.
I was just thinking with, with Mr. O'Neill, that rather than meeting, although not, not instead, but in addition to meeting one-on-one with council members, it would be good to have this kind of report from time to time in public, so that everybody is aware of what's going on and his confidence as our representative.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to thank you for the work that you do. We enjoy a very high quality of life in this town, and it doesn't come free. And you provide a great deal of the revenue that allows us to deal with the activities that we have, the infrastructure that we have, the new facilities that we enjoy, and the reserves that we build. So keep it up.
Thank you, Gary. And let me open it up for public comments. Anyone in the public would like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and as you know, I have a contrary view on many things. I want to start by saying, however, two good things about Visit Newport Beach. Number one, the people who work in their Newport Center office are very nice. And number two, as you heard, we contract with them to operate the T-Bid, and three weeks ago, for the first time ever, a meeting of the T-Bid Board of Directors was announced for all the world to see on the city website, and I applaud them for taking the initiative to do that. Beyond that, I unfortunately have nothing good to say, because every meeting of the larger Newport Beach and Company Board is also a meeting of the T-Bid Board, and despite what you just heard, the business that they conduct there is never publicly noticed. More importantly, I am fundamentally opposed to the city having any financial involvement with this organization, and deeply resentful of their promotion of the idea that I live not in a city, but in a brand of their devising, and that the be-all and end-all of my city government should be promotion and fidelity to their brand. I happen to think Newport Beach is a beautiful residential city, in a beautiful natural setting, and I believe it would be so with or without tourism, and for many of us, perhaps better without the tourism. I'm also concerned about this new Newport Beach and Company with the many tentacles of its organization chart, reaching beyond tourism into more and more aspects of our city life, sucking in public dollars and performing functions that do not seem to me to be at all nonprofit. I believe Mr. Sherman, Sherwin, if he had his way, would want the city council and the city staff to be relegated to boxes on the organization chart of this new organization, and each agenda report presented to you to have a section assuring you that your action would be consistent with the direction he wants for the city. Among the many problems with that scenario is the complete opacity, not transparency, to the general public of this organization. This little booklet claims to be the annual report of Newport Beach and Company for 2012 and 13, and it suggests this mysterious board has far more directors and governors than it has employees, but it doesn't give me a clue as to who selects them. I know I don't, and I fail to see why they should be given any special influence or recognition. Thank you.
I do think it would be a different city without the $14 million those tourists leave behind to fund our police and fire and parks and recreation and libraries. Any other public speakers? Please come forward.
Thank you, Robert Hawkins. I apologize for my attire tonight. I'm on my way to the gym. I am here solely for the John Wayne Airport issue. And Mr. Sherwin apparently put that to rest by his stepping away from marking John Wayne Airport during the settlement negotiations. I don't think that does it. I don't think that we should be paying anyone to market John Wayne Airport. After the settlement discussions are finalized, let's assume the environmental document is certified by the county and no one challenges it. The settlement agreement, the project in that document, will show that at some point, if it gives the county and John Wayne Airport an incentive to build up additional, additional passenger cap, an additional passenger cap of almost 500 million passengers, if it is tripped. Well, we've seen that Mr. Sherwin and Visit Newport Beach has been successful in marketing Newport Beach. We don't want that success move to John Wayne Airport, trigger that, or hit that trigger and move the million annual passengers to an increase. So I think what we need is to have Visit Newport Beach distance itself from any marketing of John Wayne Airport at all, period. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
I would just like to say that I-
Just give your name, please.
Oh, Danielle Distel. I'd like to say that I think the speaker from Newport Beach and Company was just phenomenal, and I am so happy for what they're doing. But this gentleman seems to know more than anybody here in this meeting that what attracts people to any location is that it's got to look good, all right? And it's not just Fashion Island and Balboa Island and the Newport Coast. It's Mariners also, and that does not mean Six Lanes. It means just making it aesthetically nice. And also the Newport Pier. This past summer, a couple of months ago, I ran into some tourists, nicely dressed, and they were going down to the Newport Pier, that area, for their first night in Newport Beach, their very first night. And I just happened to be going for my walk in that area, and they asked me about a good restaurant to eat at. And I just said, "No." You know, their first night, and I could tell by looking at them, and I put them in a cab and sent them to Fashion Island. And I, I just think that, you know, no, it's just not good enough that certain parts of this city look really, really nice, and then other parts, you just don't know where you are. And are you really in a first-class city? Because it certainly doesn't look that way. So I think everybody who's concerned really needs to up the bar, and when you start talking about what plans you might want to have, you got to know what the outcome is. Like, the plan about Six Lanes in Mariners is just ridiculous. That's where I live, basically, and there's no big traffic problem there. No, you have to really, really study what you're doing and then plan accordingly with an outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers? All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the city council. Any other comments? Again, we thank you for that report and for the good job being done, and be assured we're working hard to beautify all parts of our city, and we look forward to your report next year and another great and successful year with Newport Beach and Company. Thank you. Okay. Public comments, including public comments on items on the closed session agenda. Anyone have any comments to make? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I appreciate the opportunity to provide, that you provide, the public to comment on the closed session agenda, but as I've said before, I think both you and the public would be better served if the agenda were more forthcoming about the issues you need to resolve. The first item we see tonight is one we've seen many times before, namely, an announcement that you need to secretly discuss with our city manager and human resources director. There are ongoing negotiations with all 10 of our city employees' associations. I don't know what it really means, because two weeks ago, you hid behind an identical announcement to give final approval to an agreement secretly worked out, not with the 10 groups, but with a handful of trash workers in the event that they were outsourced. That agreement, as one of you pointed out, is a matter that would have been more properly considered in open session as part of the larger question of trash outsourcing. By resorting to the cheap trick of preapproving a labor agreement in closed session without the public's knowledge that you were even considering it, you not only shut your ears to public suggestions that might have improved the agreement, but deprived the many people who came here that evening of even a token opportunity to review or comment on what the mayor announced you had secretly approved on our behalf. Making decisions for us without our knowledge is not good government. Next on tonight's agenda, we have this completely uninformative, last-minute announcement about closed-session discussion of Friday's devastating Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision regarding our group homes ordinance. I spent Saturday listening to the oral arguments and carefully reading the 59 pages of opinion, and I think this is arguably the most significant item on tonight's agenda, requiring, as it does, a complete rethinking of our approach to group homes. It deserves a thorough, open, and candid public discussion, yet it will be swept behind closed doors, and the public will hear nothing about it until we receive the bills to compensate the many group homes that were apparently illegally forced out of our city. And we probably won't even see those bills, since legal settlements are quietly approved by you on our behalf behind closed doors without public scrutiny. Not knowing what you will hear, I only hope you won't, without public discussion, be talked into spending still more tax dollars appealing this appeal. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I am not going to be at tonight's meeting, but I want to thank you for adjourning in the memory of my friend, Ron Hendrickson. Thank you.
Any other speakers? All right, we will adjourn to closed session.
And just briefly, we'll be adjourning to closed session this evening to discuss the items on the regular session agenda under items 2A through C, which includes the labor negotiations, as well as the performance review for the city attorney, and the last, the Pacific Shore property and Newport Coast recovery litigation matters.